We're recording, Mr. Chairman, whatever you would like.
Uh, we'll call this meeting to order for the date of Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. We'll call members, please.
Generous?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Herter?
Yes.
And Pierce. I'll let, or I can show that Pierce is absent.
Okay, um, do you all have a chance to read the minutes? Kind of, is there a motion to approve the minutes or make corrections?
I move to approve. I'll second.
If they're moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. I'll read my statement for the hearing. Public hearing will be conducted pursuant to the board's rules and procedure adopted May twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-eight. We will first hear the report of the planning director on detailed information and observations regarding the request, if not done so in written form prior to the hearing. Next, you'll take testimony of the applicant and his or her witnesses. Upon completion of the applicant's testimony, I'll call upon members of the audience wishing to make a statement concerning the request. Persons in favor of the request shall be heard first, followed by those who oppose it. At any time during the presentation of testimony, members of the board may interrupt to ask questions, make comments on what has been said. Upon completion of all testimony, the applicant will be allowed to make a closing statement to the board. Upon completion of the applicant's closing statement, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on their request. After the public hearing has been closed, we will then hear the recommendation, if any, of the planning director. And upon completion of all discussion, I'll entertain a motion from the members of the board regarding the disposition of the application. Each speaker addressing this board shall step forward to the podium, state their name and address before proceeding with testimony or evidence. I would ask that you spell your last name. This board shall not be bound by strict rules of evidence, but does deserve the right to exclude evidence or testimony that may deem to be irrelevant, immaterial, incompetent, or unduly repetitious. As chairman, I will rule, I will rule on all questions related to admissibility of evidence, which may be overridden by the majority of the board. The board may grant continuances in case for good cause shown to any interested party who has entered his appearance. The board may, at any time, request a continuance of a hearing for the purpose of getting further notice, taking further evidence, gathering further information, touring the proposed site, or for other such reasons the board may find sufficient. In such case, we shall state the specific reasons for the continuance, set a date, time, and place when the matter will be continued. All official actions of this board will made at public hearing by motion made, second, and point of membership. If conditions are imposed, such conditions shall be included in the motion or amended here too. Our final decision will be prepared in writing and will be part of the public record of this board. Once this board has reached a decision on a case, that decision shall be filed. Section three-three-five-point-one-eight of the Iowa Code states, "Any person or persons jointly or separately aggravated by any decision of the Board of Adjustment under the provisions of Chapter three-three-five, or any taxpayer, any officer, department, board, or bureau of the county may present to a court of record a petition duly verified, setting forth that such decision was illegal in whole or in part, specifying the grounds of the illegality. Such petitions shall be presented to the court within thirty days after the filing of the decision of the Office of the Board." Upon hearing that, I would ask for a motion to open up the public hearing on case number CU-dash-two thousand nineteen dash oh-three.
So moved, second.
It's moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion's carried, public hearing is now open. I would ask that Patricia Bieru Singh, or whoever is representing her, please come forward to start.
Okay, um, my name is Patricia Bieru Singh, and it's B-I-R-U-S-I-N-G-H. And I live at two oh-five-two-five Monument Road Crescent. Okay, so.
Yep.
Okay, so what we're asking for is a conditional use permit for a private home cemetery. I think, do you have, do you have some information on this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this would be, gosh, I have my lovely neighbors here, and I already promised them that the ghosts will not go and visit them. But this is five acres, we have a hundred and sixty acres. This is five acres sort of in the middle. It would be, so, I think we've done, I think we've sort of crossed our K's and dotted our I's. Uh, we spoke with the Iowa Department of Health, and they said that the Iowa Insurance Division had oversight of Iowa cemeteries. We called them, and they said, um, because this is a private cemetery, they, they, they didn't have any rules or regulations. We put down the name of the person we talked to, Christina Baker. So, we, the next thing we had to do was to talk to Matt O'Neill. Uh, and I talked to Matt because we would need a, uh, we need a licensed mortician to oversee this. So I talked to him about it, he said he would be happy to do it. Um, I, I think maybe he's had another request, he's never done it, but knows about it. So it has to be five acres, and we have that marked off. It's not near, it's within limits of the septic tank and wells, there's, we have plenty of wiggle room there, it's a long ways. It's within two hundred feet of our neighbors, I mean, way more than two hundred feet. Not visible, not visible to them. There's room for, according to, so, the reason we're doing this is, um, we want to have a green cemetery. So, what that means is, um, there's no, uh, there's no embalming. So this is our plan. Um, our plan is to, upon probably my death first, because I have seven children. There's twenty-five in our family, plus me, grandchildren, children, spouses. They probably are not, they are not all interested in this, some are. So, upon a death, you have three days. And then there's specifications as to how deep you're buried, there's specifications, you can't, no vault, no casket. Whatever you're buried, if you're going to be buried in something, it has to be green, like a fabric or wood, it has to be approved. Our plan is to dig a hole and be buried in nothing, I mean, maybe a shroud, but in nothing, and then plant a tree. That's our plan. In five acres, you have room for something like sixteen hundred bodies in a hundred years. We will probably, we're saying, at most, we would have thirty bodies in a hundred years. There would be no markers, you're not allowed to have a marker, an upright marker, you can have something flat. And we haven't, I think probably we would have something made out of natural wood with, um, names, dates, and, um, and, you know, some, who we are, mom, dad, child. So I think, are there any other, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess the one question I have is, I was just curious how many people you thought might be under, we said around thirty, you thought?
I think thirty, because there's, so, with me and my children, and I have twelve grandchildren, so that's twenty-five. I don't even think all of our children are real interested, are really interested in it. Some are, some aren't, but, so, max would be thirty, I mean, until we get to great-grandchildren, and that would be.
This becomes a permanent cemetery, then?
Permanent.
Is there anyone buried there now from your family?
No.
Nobody's in?
No, just we, we would, we don't have to have it, uh, we do not have to have it surveyed. But we have to mark it off, and we have to have cornerstones, which can be posts, so it has to be marked off. Then, interestingly enough, um, we need to know where the graves are. And you can do that with GPS, which is very expensive, uh, which we would not do. Uh, a tree is, you know, temporary, I mean, we would plant something pretty permanent. But you can also bury metal, something metal, so that you can, with a metal detector, determine where the grave is, and then you have to keep a record of it.
So if you, if the farm is sold at some point in the future, does this stay?
That stays.
Excluded from that?
It stays. My plan, um, so, my husband was a physician, and we built, we bought that, um, gosh, forty-eight years ago, uh, where there were very few people there, and these were neighbors who, their parents were there. But there was no, there, the houses that you see falling off the cliff, none of those were there. So, we really worked hard on this piece of property. Doctor Bieru Singh came and was on an old beat-up tractor all the time. So, um, it's more than just, and we raised our kids there, and Chris's family from Trinidad, and, um, so it's more than just the house with a nice lot, it really has our soul in it. So the plan is, is, um, actually soon, is to have, sell it to the children, a couple of children, who then have great plans for this, to keep it in the family. I can't rule from the grave, but, um, they all, the children all want to keep it, um, to probably, um, to keep it in the family.
Again, just thinking out, long-term, because I'm not familiar with this. Do you, are you required to do any maintenance on it or anything like that?
No.
We're assuming you can just let it grow?
Maybe it says you have to keep, I think you maybe have to keep the weeds down. And we talked about this, because we're trying to, I mean, I, I think we were talking about putting in native brasses. Because I have enough maintenance on that place, just.
I was just thinking about con- continued responsibility after your whole family's gone, then, if that's excluded from that.
There's continued responsibility requirements through Iowa Cemetery Act, that the way they listed out is, it's, uh, and it's one of our conditions that we'll put on there, is that the current property owner, future property owners, and the wording that they use is, uh, preserve and protect. So it doesn't necessarily mean, do they have to be in there mowing?
So if it doesn't transfer with the surrounding ground, though, and none of the bruisings are left, who's responsible for maintenance on it?
Well, it's, the parcel of ground is, is in, is, it's not a separate five-acre parcel itself.
Right.
So whoever buys the property would.
They, they would inherit that responsibility?
Charge that they have to, so, I mean, it can complicate things, I would imagine. I've never, you know, bought a place with a cemetery or burial site, burial site on it, but it could be one of those discouraging factors to somebody coming into buying that place, knowing, hey, there's a cemetery there that I'm going to have to, you always maintain, not necessarily, I'll say maintain, but.
Can't disturb it.
Yeah, so you have, you'll have a five-acre plot of ground that you can't ever touch, necessarily.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that explanation.
And your children that you think are going to buy that, they're going to buy the whole piece?
Yes, we're not splitting it up. We just had that discussion, actually, yesterday. There's, um, one, my oldest son is really interested in. My mother died there, my husband died there, his father died there. Kurt said, my plan is to, that's my plan. So, um, and if there's one other one, they will buy it together, they'll buy it jointly.
People are not buried, I mean, they're buried someplace else, right? Your, your wife, your husband and.
Right, right.
Parents of those.
Right. They're in a cemetery, so, um, that's, I of course, um, would like to bring Chris back, along with his father, who lived with us, and then there's an infant, uh, one of my children, like, an infant grandchild. That, so there can be no, um, there cannot be any embalming.
So if they've been embalmed, they can't bring them in?
Actually, I was just, a possibility may be that we would do cremation. But that all has to be, we really, we have, we want to, and we need to abide by the fact that this is a green cemetery.
Is that the part that Matt O'Neill would oversee, then?
Yes.
Something unusual like that?
Or, he has to be notified, upon a death, he has to be notified, um, and oversee it. So I don't know if that means he comes out and looks to be sure, and is sure that the hole is big enough, that sounds so.
I would imagine he probably has to ensure it meets the guidelines for the burial.
Yeah.
And the body itself.
Right, and, and that's a requirement.
Very interesting.
It's in, yeah, it is.
I didn't know there was such a thing.
Yeah, actually.
Are there others?
Yes, there's others, I think in Potawatomi County, I mean, Matt said, he knows of some, he said, I've never been directly involved, I didn't, yeah, I didn't talk to, um, Bud Kilnowski, because Chris and my husband and Maury O'Neill were good friends, and she, so I talked, yeah. So, um, but yeah, there's, I think there's some, I think there's some in Pot County. Uh, Matt, because Matt said, I know of, I know of a couple.
My sister and brother-in-law have, in Kansas City, it was an Indian burial ground, but they are making it green, and, um, my brother-in-law, uh, his brother, we had a funeral, a green funeral, which nobody knew what to expect, and actually, it was very, it was peaceful and very, you know, it was really beautiful, we were all kind of nervous about it, but it was very natural, you know?
I'm really up for that, I, this whole, this whole funeral visitation thing is sort of not my bag of tea, but.
I'm with you.
All right, if they have more questions, I think we're, we're good, so, thank you for your time.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I need to be up at Saint Albert's to teach a class.
Okay.
Do I need to stay, is it rude to leave, do I need to stay?
Certainly not rude, but.
You don't have to stay, well, we can notify you of the decision tomorrow, if you like. Because there's going to be, there are going to be a lot of people to come out and speak for it, there are going to be a lot of people to come out and speak against it, and then, um, but we can notify you of the decision tomorrow, certainly.
Okay, I, yeah, I have a sudden sort of.
We don't take it personally.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'd ask, uh, anyone who wants to speak in favor of this to come forward. If there's no one there, I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to oppose it to come forward now. There's, um, if you're in there, we'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the hearing, second?
To move in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, public hearing has been closed. So I'll hear from Matt on his recommendation.
The recommendation of the planning department is to approve the application subject to the following conditions. The cemetery shall contain an area of five acres or more. The cemetery shall be at least fifty feet from any wells. The national cemetery guidelines adopted from the Green Burial Council are adhered to. The I, the cemetery shall conform to the Iowa Cemetery Act, Chapter five-twenty-three I. The property owner shall notify the county recorder's office on interment. The property owner shall provide the county with a survey drawn to scale of the site, also showing an easement of ingress and egress to the site twenty-five feet in width. And then, uh, the current property owner and future property owners are responsible for the preservation and protection of the cemetery into perpetuity. These are based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the subject property is located in an eight-four Les Hills district. The county's zoning ordinance, which is adopted in conjunction with the land use plan, stipulates that the proposed land use is permitted conditional use in an eight-four district. The subject property is located in an area primarily utilized for agricultural and residential, and the existing road system is not foreseen to be impacted.
Okay.
And we have done, we have, uh, run into, when we talk about the distance from wells, Russ Tell works with the Iowa DNR, and he's kind of the all-foreseen well guru of the state of Iowa, and it was actually on the Garner Cemetery out there when they were trying to do, when they were doing a well out there, and, uh, while this is, while they're sent, you know, there's the Green Burial Council, you know, the Green Burial part of it, so the embalming's not necessarily there. They, uh, Russ says that they actually worry a little bit more about the older sites that happened, um, way beforehand, you know, the eighteen, eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, those are the.
Were the rules?
Yeah, he's like, you really gotta try to stay away from those burial sites, because the, in, uh, the chemicals that they use were a lot less regulated and things like that, so, uh, so the newer ones aren't much of a concern, and since they're not, you know, this won't have any embalming done to it, then the impact to any well would, uh, would not, would be minimal from the, you know, because the chemicals aren't going to be there, so. And then, uh, you know, we do have a few of these that we know of, um, in the county, and I was telling, uh, Mr. Bell earlier, he stopped in my office, and when I first got hired out at the county, he just stopped the road on Borden Avenue. I was going up to the front door of a place, and there was a fenced-off area, the, like, exact size of a coffin, and that was where somebody had had their husband buried right off the front porch, I mean. I mean, they're out there.
Right, right.
But it is a problem, that, I mean, the questions that we had about making sure that they are preserved and protected, uh, into the future is something that we definitely wanted to make sure was addressed.
Okay. I think that sounds good, there's, uh, some more discussion, discussion on the board, I guess I would entertain a motion from the board.
I would move that we approve the conditional use permit for the private cemetery as recommend, with the recommendations by the planning department. I second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call vote.
General?
Yes.
Herter?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
The application has been approved.
Thank you, makes my life much easier to plan, thank you.
Next, I would ask for the, uh, open the public hearing on case number CU-dash-two thousand nineteen dash oh-four. Richard Player?
So moved.
Did you second it?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. We didn't have to do that video, okay?
No, yeah, you're, you're doing it right.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All right, all in favor, I oppose the same, motion carried.
I'm Richard Player, um, I'm here to talk to you guys about a conditional use for a chiropractic office at two zero eight-five-four McPherson Avenue. Um, we've got a chiropractic office, I'd like to, um, have permission to, to practice in that location. Um, I meant to do this a long time ago, and I have not done it, so it's been a, I talked to, about a year ago, and, um, we moved in in June, and, um, since last November, it was, next month I'll go, next month I'll go, and we're here. So, um, we see approximately a hundred and, basically, when you look at the, the building there on the west side, uh, basically that half of the building, of the main floor, um, it's about a thousand square feet, they would take. And we'd like to, uh, use that for the office. The other side, at some point, uh, we're not living in the house at this time, uh, we are, um, there will be some, there will be the possibility of my parents, at some point, um, living there, as they get a little bit older. And they may stay for a month or two at a time. But for right now, no one's living in that, in that side. We see approximately a hundred and twenty patients a week, unless it's a work week.
Okay. So how many cars at one time would be?
On average, we'd probably have two or three, okay, at a time. There will be times when, Saturday mornings tend to get, um, pretty busy, we've got room on the main, across the front of the, the building there for seven cars.
Okay.
And then there's overflow for myself and staff to park in the adjacent lot on Sunnydale.
Okay. You said you have been there for a while, it, uh, seemed like the parking works all right, or, I mean, is there?
It works pretty well.
I, I did drive by, just because I kind of like to go before, and I did see the sign, I'm like, oh, that's kind of, the sign is already out there, so I thought that was, I was curious as to how that was, but, uh, but. All right, well, uh, I guess, where were you at before that, or is that?
Part of sixteen, or, uh, McPherson and, and, um, Bennett. So, Dirks Chiropractic.
Okay.
Is the, the corporate name.
All right.
And we were there for, my original office was at seventeen oh-five McPherson, and then I merged offices with Dr. Dirks, ten years ago at sixteen oh-one McPherson, and now we're at two zero eight-five-four McPherson.
All right.
Like that street now.
Gave it away from it, so.
Is there any other questions this time, or? All right, I think you're good, thank you. I'd ask anyone who wants to speak in favor come forward. Anybody opposed? There's no one there, so, um, if I'm moving that, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
It moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried, ask for Matt's recommendation.
The planning department's recommendation is to approve the application subject to the following conditions being met and inspected before the conditional use begins, and, number one is that the required five parking spaces shall be delineated, and an ADA parking space shall be paved. The residential portion of the structure shall not be utilized for the chiropractic office or multifamily units. Any modifications being made to the residential units will be permitted through the county planning department. Any signage shall be limited to section eight-point-zero-nine-zero-point-zero-three-zero-point-zero-six of the Potawatomi County Iowa Code, and installed after the building permit is issued, a building permit, the building will be brought up to the accessibility standards of the two thousand fifteen International Building Code and two thousand fifteen International Fire Code. Building inspector will review the structure to ensure compliance with the permits. Uh, for any work needed, there will be, uh, any of the permits that need to be issued will be commercial building permits issued to the county planning department, and it's based on the following findings of fact. The commercial activity is a listed permitted conditional use in R-two district, which conforms to the land use plan policy. The subject property is located in an area primarily utilized for residential purpose. The conditional use is not foreseen to have any negative impacts on the properties. The existing road system is adequate to accommodate this commercial activity. The aforementioned conditions will minimize any potential adverse impact on the adjoining properties. And I can state for, uh, Mr. Player, we did have a building inspector that went out and has been through the property, even, he felt as though it met the code standards, um, as far as anything else needed for permitting-wise on that. We have been working with him on getting a permit for the sign that he installed out in front of the business, and we do need to make sure that we get that application part turned in to the office, so we can get that permitted and, and done right. And really, the only thing that I would see that he would need, that he needed to add, and this is just for the ADA part of it, is just to make sure that we have one paved ADA spot out there with the size of business they have, so.
Is that gravel currently?
I believe the majority of it's gravel.
Majority, yeah. When would the, when would the paving have to be done?
I don't know that you're going to be able to do any paving right now, that would be something that we'll probably, you'll probably have to talk to a concrete contractor, because I imagine that it may be, but, yeah. Because I don't know that they're doing any flat work right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably late. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I guess upon hearing that, I would entertain a motion?
I would move that we accept his application, and under the findings that he's made, that he complied to the signage and the ADA parking spot.
Second?
It's been moved in second, roll call vote?
Hurter?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
General?
Yes. Application has been approved.
No other business for the board tonight.
Okay, upon hearing that, I guess I'd ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second?
It moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion being adjourned.